Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a special Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, August 29, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is Massachusetts state primary, September 8, 2016, and this will be held at the... Dana Gustin's?
Yes. And polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. One of the reasons we have this meeting tonight is to actually approve the warrant, which we have as part of our new business further down. But we'll be posting it in the seven various places in town, and we encourage everyone to go out to vote on September 8, which also means that we bump where our meeting after the holiday but is before. So that's hopefully going to work out okay.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of Treasury warrants, we'll sign those before we adjourn. Appointments and resignations. We have three individuals to be appointed to the municipal center building committee. The first one is Mr. Les Davis. We have James Fish and Thomas Hall. I would entertain a motion to approve those three individuals to the...
I make a motion to appoint Les Davis, James Fish, and Tom Hall to the multiple center building relocation committee.
Second?
Roll.
Aye.
Public forum. Where's Peter?
This is a long one.
Right. New business, the highlight of the evening, Mrs. Callahan is going to give us a presentation on the Mass Works Grant.
I'm going to move over there because it'll be much easier. Rather than talking abstract to the public, we thought since this board has made a commitment to really go after grants, that it would be important to inform the public any time that one, we're pursuing a grant, and also tonight you will be approving, I hope with great hope, the final draft of the Mass Works Grant, which we'll talk about. I think it's coming on.
You can shift wherever you want.
Yeah, you want to come up here, rattling your knuckles, you can. It's not a long presentation, but hopefully one that suffices to...
Oh, it's on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can. Okay. That looks good. Our expert here in Cable is going to make sure that it comes out very well. Sure. Sure. So what you have before you, before I start, is the actual application for your approval tonight, even though I will be submitting it. You do have a letter in your packet to read, and then I'm going to ask for your signatures on that that will come officially from you as an entire board to support this particular grant program that we're applying for, which has had a very, very quick timetable to have to actually pull it together. So this is called the Central Street Improvement Project, but in particular, the actual grant program is called the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. And for the town of Millville, this is a very important program, which has not actually been applied for in quite a few years, which means that's really good for us in a lot of ways. First of all, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, you can usually apply for four different types of grants. You can do it for high-density housing development, you can do it in terms of mixed-use development, you can use this grant program to do economic development and job creation and retention. But for us, our project is in the fourth category, and that has to do with transportation improvements to enhance safety for small and rural communities. Why is this important for us and why are we picking this project? First of all, Millville, we always say Mighty Millville, is a small community with about 3,100 people, so our population fits the bill for actually being in a smaller competitive applicant pool. We have not applied in the last three years, which makes us eligible. And this particular cycle, the legislature has increased the amount that it's applying into the Mass Works programs for funding, more than 500. And so it means that we have a very good chance of success. So why else are we picking this and why are we picking Central Street? Because we could pick a lot of different roads in town because we know we have infrastructure needs. First of all, the conditions on Central Street are pretty deplorable. We have some pictures here that we're submitting with our grant proposal that shows beautiful sidewalks that are not so beautiful. They're completely falling apart, they don't exist in certain places. We have other areas that we've submitted photographs where we have just dirt paths, and when we have inclement weather, whether it's snow or rain, people don't walk on that, they walk in the street. We have the bikeway that's going across, and we have, as you can see, waffled pavement across right where we would hope that people would come off the pathway and go to downtown or visit our historic places or go to the Georges business down the street. People aren't going to be enticed to do that unless we do something with the street. But more importantly, our residents every day are walking in the street with their baby carriages, with their groceries if they're going down to our sole marketplace downtown, if they're going down to go get a pizza down on the main street, whatever it is, they're walking in the middle of the street. So Central Street today is a prime candidate for funding like this. We have more than 6,000 cars and trucks that go over this road. It's very high volume, more than 16% are really heavy trucks, which have degraded the road surface even more and also has contributed to the problems with some of our sidewalks because trucks, in order to get by in some places, are actually driving up over what used to be a sidewalk or a broken sidewalk. In 2010, we did the bridges on about 1,000 feet from the center of town out to Ironstone, and that was it. So we have a beautiful set of five bridges, the John Dean Bridges, and we have some nice sidewalks that go across the bridges, and then it ends. So we need to make a connection from that point all the way up to the Rhode Island border because, Lord knows, we get enough traffic from Rhode Island and back and forth, and we get enough foot traffic coming from all the housing developments off of Providence. So Central Street today is a prime candidate. We also have the Greenway, which is going across, I mentioned, and we know that this is going to lead to increased pedestrian use and also increased bicycle use. And we need something that's going to connect our downtown that is really user-friendly and one that entices people to use the road in the right way and entices pedestrians and bicyclists to be able to travel it safely. So we're picking Central Street because we have problems with drainage, we have problems with the road conditions and the surfacing from everything from real horrible cracks to actual chunks of the pavement missing. We have pedestrian safety, we have a bikeway that's almost completed, and we don't have any ADA compliance. You know, we want to be an accessible community. We have people who might be in wheelchairs or temporarily may be disabled, and you cannot actually traverse on our sidewalks the way they are. So it makes it a good project for funding. So there are five key aspects to this improvement project. One is going to entail actually reconstructing the road, pavement, they're going to improve markings, they're going to do some traffic calming elements to slow traffic where it needs to be and to improve visibility for people who are driving to see where pedestrians might be actually either crossing the road or being able to see where actual sidewalks begin and end. So that means that along with the road construction, we are going to do sidewalk construction, and we are going to look to connect all the way up to Providence Street to improve on both sides of the road, all the way up to the intersection of Providence. Again, I mentioned already the ADA compliance, where we're looking to put wheelchair ramps in all driveways and intersections so that when they put in these sidewalks, you'll actually be able to have a seamless way of walking and/or using a handicap-accessible device. Also, we're trying to make this a complete street design. What that means is that since we have a bicycle path that's going right through our area, the Blackstone River Greenway, formerly known as the Blackstone Bikeway, we're going to need signage to promote people to come downtown, to use Georges, to use and go get a pizza, to do any number of things, go visit our historic sites, go see our Veterans Park. And we also need drainage improvements. Right where Pearl Street and the bikeway is, it floods, and so this project is going to do that. Having said that, it's not a small project, and if we get funding, which is what we're looking for, the overall funding from the state that we're looking for is $1 million. We're going for the maximum, and this is a kind of breakdown of that where you can see the survey and permitting is roughly $20,000, the permitting is roughly $5,000, design and engineering about $150,000, and the construction cost a little over $1 million. And we have made a commitment, since this was a road, that we were going to actually try to resurface on our own, we're going to go and anticipate our Chapter 90 money to be able to help towards that. So it's going to be a real partnership with Mass Highway and Millville Highway and also the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. So if you look at it in terms of a timetable, why are we doing this now in the middle of summer? Because we only had 10 days to apply. I want to say thank you to some of the people, and I will in the next slide or two, some of the people who pulled this together in a short period of time. We had only 10 days to actually apply tonight after you hopefully approve this. We'll be uploading it to meet the September 2 deadline. These announcements are projected to be later this fall, and this is for construction to take place. Another reason we picked Central Street is we had to pick a project where they like to see the project construction begun and end within that year. So we have a rigorous timetable that has been vetted with TEC Engineering, who believes that this is a completely doable time schedule, and as you can see on the left side, I put the milestones in terms of the dates starting and also go through everything from surveying all the way down to 100% construction. So we're hoping by November of next year, we'll be on our punch list and it will be a completed project. Having said that, I just put in a couple of graphic designs that were developed by TEC Engineering, who really came right at the right time, along with Central Mass Regional Planning, to help put some elements into this grant application. And this particular slide is one that actually starts down in the lower level where Ironstone Street is. If you can see here. Here, Ironstone, here is the SNET, which is the Southern New England Trump Line Trail, but it's also known as the Blackstone Greenway, Blackstone River Greenway project. So up here, where you see these little green things, what they're trying to do is actually improve the site for when you're entering into certain streets. So from here all the way to Quaker, the concept is to put sidewalks back on both sides of the street, and good sidewalks that will go right along seamlessly down to Ironstone Street. After Quaker, because the road configuration changes, the notion is to go all the way up through Basley, all the way to Providence with one side having a sidewalk. And also, as you can see, the green areas at the intersection, again, to improve the site for people entering and exiting and so that they'll also be able to see pedestrians, foot traffic, and bicyclists better. And then the other piece of it, the brown piece that you see, is intentionally there because the entire roadway will be resurfaced as well. So in a nutshell, we've had good partners for progress here. We've had the, you'll see support letters in here from the Heritage Corada, Central Mass Regional Planning, tech engineers, the Chamber of Commerce, our fire police chief, local business Georges, the highway experts, and you guys as local officials. So I think we have a good grant application. I like to think about this as putting the pieces together, rebuilding Millville's infrastructure. This is our first attempt. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. I think we have a really good chance of being able to access this funding and hopefully give the people of Millville a really nice thoroughfare that goes right downtown, and I'd like to think of this as the first project that we can do. So I hope tonight, when you've had the chance to look at your packet, you'll approve the application and allow us to actually go forward and apply for this on time, and hopefully we'll get good news in the future. Thank you.
One board member, if you have questions or discussion regarding approval of the application.
I just have a couple of questions. Was there consideration that there's concrete underneath the roadway?
Mm-hmm.
And for all of that?
And I forgot to mention that our highway surveyor, who has been working closely with me on this, unfortunately, he had a longstanding appointment tonight that he could not miss, but he said he would be more than happy to come before the board in the future. Yes, there is, there were questions about whether we were going to address the fire suppression lines that exist underneath there, and there has been more consensus that we need to address that whole issue going forward, perhaps even in a different way than just trying to constantly upgrade a system that's source for fire suppression is inadequate to begin with, meaning the pond there up on the Providence Street. So yes, he has taken that into consideration, and that you'll see that Chapter 90 money, that was going to be used anyway. But Brian, our highway surveyor, understands that that small amount of money would never do the scope of what this project will do. So combined, it can really do the whole thing. So yes, he did, and that was discussed at our meetings that we had initially on the grant in prioritizing it.
Okay. The other thing was, you talked about two sidewalks going from extending up to Quaker?
Roughly, yeah. They know where, I think, their particular...
All right, because I know, this goes back way back, but I actually, after I left my first terms, I sent a letter talking about the parking on Central Street because there is a section that people park up and onto the sidewalk. I came down one day with two kids, and I couldn't get through. I literally had to go in the street, so they evaluated it at the time with fire and police and the trucks, and they said, well, we're not going to have parking on, so the south side going towards Rhode Island. But the people still park on the sidewalk. Now with these sidewalks, they're going to be raised...
That's another consideration. They make it more difficult so that the delineation will be much more clear.
So my concern with that is that if we have sidewalks on both sides, we're probably not going to be able to have parking, and then we have that church there. So if one side had a sidewalk and the other side had kind of like a pull-off area, would it be more appropriate? I don't know. Those are for the experts, but that's my...
Well, and that will come later on, I think, when they go through the motions of the actual final designs. Again, this is the concept draft. Yes, and anytime they do a project like this, even though it's basically all falls within the right-of-way, it will be determined by those people in trying to address some of that. And again, though, the biggest thing is whether people are doing certain things now or not is going to really, we have to look at what's really feasible to enhance the public safety part of it, and then from there also use the expertise of the engineers, the public safety officials in town, to say what really makes sense. Even if something has been being done now, the whole point, you can see, and you're quite clear on that, is with people parking up on the actual walkways and on the, what is really not a great sidewalk to begin with, is a problem, and it's been used in that way. But they can actually buffer it out closer away from the middle of the road, and they may be actually able to create better parking on the street if they can actually create the dimensions for the sidewalk and make it clear where people walk and where people can park.
All right. Another piece, and I'm not sure if it belongs in here or not, but the bridge in Rhode Island, as you may or may not know, is going to be upgraded. So I know all the signs are there, but that's going to bring the trucks. And not only is it going to bring the trucks, but the trucks are currently already coming. They're coming over the Millville Bridge, they're getting up to the sign that is at Central and Providence, and they literally, like you, a couple times a week, there's a truck just sitting there, like, what do I do? And they have to decide whether to go down either way of Providence or to go over the bridge and hope not to get caught. And then, so I don't know if that's, like, in order for us to support not only the bridge in Rhode Island over 146 for commerce, for everything, but our bridge here in Millville, you know, that road in between is sorely needed. So I don't know if that plays a part into it.
It's already happened with the way it was.
Yeah.
The way over the way, the destroying the bridge. We're hoping that we could get somebody from the state or something to put up signs to make them go down 122.
I would say...
It seems to be an issue.
No, because not only are they now turning down Providence Street, because I live on Providence Street, so when you hear a large trailer truck go by your house, you're going to take notice on a street then.
They're also tearing up your road.
And not only that, but now they're actually, before they would just stop on Central, like they're lost and they don't know what to do, and I understand that, I get that, but they are now coming from Great Road, 146A, and taking the cut-through. So not only are they going to Rhode Island, but they're coming in from Rhode Island as a cut-through. And I've actually taken pictures, I've shown the police chief, but that's happening, and those roads cannot support those trucks and a car, and we have no sidewalks there, which is fine. I don't want sidewalks in front of my house, but you know what I'm saying? So we need to address the traffic pattern and the types of traffic, and the Rhode Island piece of it, too. So I don't know if that even belongs in here, but...
I wouldn't say it belongs in here, but I do think it may have a positive effect. And the reason why is if they do fund this particular grant, it is looking and seeking to make this not a highway, but to actually do the reverse, to make it welcoming to recreational uses, people on foot, people on bicycle. It's part of the complete streets to give, you know, credence to the fact that we're trying to make streets accessible to everybody, from those people who have disabilities to those people who can ride a bike and those people who can walk. So it being close to the actual Greenway path as well, I think will only enhance our ability to say that this road is not conducive to large truck traffic, and that if Rhode Island is already making those motions, then we need to partner up with them. So a lot of trying to create truck exclusions, usually you have to follow the road to whatever community it goes, and it can't be just your section creating a truck exclusion, it has to go into the next community. So knowing that this bridge is being closed down, it, I think, also provides us with an opportunity to say, one, we're going for this grant, two, we have a bridge that's going to be under repair in the neighboring state, and therefore we need some kind of relief because our road is going to be potentially improved in a way that is not for large-scale, heavy volume of truck traffic. So I think it will help, but they're not one in the same, but it should help. And that's something that I think we should put on a future agenda to be able to even further go into that and even potentially invite people from the State Department of Transportation to really address this issue with us, either as a formal agenda item or as an actual meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I would be more than happy to set that up because I think it's overdue, and it's not just on Providence Street and Central Street, it's, Ironstone Street is suffering in that regard as well.
Because they're using the sidewalks.
Is it my understanding that most of that heavy truck traffic is generated on 146A in Uxbridge?
A lot of it is. It's going to and from the businesses that are located on the south part of Uxbridge. And it may be, again, something where we know we have 122A and we also have a 146A and we have 122. There's really no reason to use this other than it's a convenience factor. But the state highway system does typically not like to remove opportunities for vehicles to get from point A to point B. However, we know that this is a very different aspect because there are other ways people can travel. They don't like to do it if it's the only way you can travel, but there are certainly other routes they can take. And to go two miles up the street to the Uxbridge, you know, Y and turn down 146A is really not a big deal to a business owner that's going to continue to get that business client anyway. So, and I think that the time has come. I think there's been sporadic advocacy from different people, but I think if we do a united advocacy, I think we'll get further along.
Whether or not this belongs in here or after the fact, if approved, is this something that the green energy community could get into so that if there is light posts or lighting needing for signs, that we might be able to use a solar aspect on that? Do you know what I'm saying? I know I had a conversation with Mr. Finn once, and he was talking about using the river as a hydro with the Valley Tech to produce something, but I'm thinking, you got the bike path, you've got these signs there, would it be in our best favor to maybe somehow work with, you know, would that go later on, go there? If we got the signs, do, you know, use some of our green energy to light those areas to do those things.
I think the immediate priority of the green energy committee...
Is the buildings.
Is the buildings and reducing energy costs, fire station one being the primary goal. But sure.
Light poles on the bridge, boy, that would be nice.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know what I'm saying? Or even going up from, if we're inviting people from our bikeway down, we should light the way, you know? And if we're able to incorporate that, and they put it there, and we, you know, we use some funds here or there or whatever, but that's, like I said, I know that's a next step, but my brain is trying to wrap itself around all of it, so just something to think about for the future.
That kind of thinking works well with even larger-scale grants. A million dollars is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but it's not a lot of money when you start talking major infrastructure. But community development block grants typically handle some of those large-scale projects with street enhancements, and, you know, there is strong possibility for us to be able to look at that when I talk about street enhancements and talking about things that look like period poles that, you know, deal with that, the whole issue of making the street look welcoming and not full of wires and full of poles that are coming intersection. And we may need to really address that as well, depending on where poles are put when they're doing this reconstruction of those sidewalks anyway. So I think it may come up in the near future, we might be able to incorporate it in another grant proposal, which we hope to do.
That's all I have.
If we miss this cycle, the next opportunity would be three years from now.
So it's only every three years, application?
Yeah, for the full amount.
Would I hear, I'd like to hear a motion to proceed with this and sign the application.
So moved.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. A thank you to everyone who, you know, helped partner on it and make it a reality. It's, we've had a lot to contend with in this town, so, in a very short period of time. So I want to thank the board for their leadership in being able to provide direction and in understanding that, you know, we're going to try to pursue whatever we can with the regular business, along with whatever's happening with the town hall. So thank you.
In your packet, you have a letter of support.
Yeah, I read it.
Yeah, there's a letter of support that I would like you to also sign that will be incorporated into the package.
I would, I would motion to sign, I read it, and it sounds...
Thank you.
It sounds good.
Your second now.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Your name is?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, next on your new business, you have the state primary warrant. You'll have seven copies this evening to sign. I know Tom Clark would have liked to be here tonight to let you know you've already announced that the primary is going to be on September 8, but we had to actually approve this this evening to actually come in compliance with posting it prior to your next meeting because it would be too late.
Motion signed.
We want people to vote. We want people to vote.
So moved.
Okay. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Seven copies.
Okay, thank you. Yes, seven copies. I can start both of those down that way. Thank you.
At this time, we'll finish, we'll sign paper warrants and vendor warrants for adjourned. Our next meeting, our regular scheduled meeting will be September 6th, 7:30 at this location.
What time?
7 o'clock. I'm sorry. Did I hear that? Was that right? He was saying, he says, 7 o'clock. 7 o'clock.
We won't start until you gavel us anyway, so we'll be waiting for you. We'll be waiting for you.
I intend to be on time.
I know you always are. I also just included a couple of correspondences for you to read that came by rather than sending them directly by email. So they're not part of your package tonight, but you can take a read of that at your leisure and if you have any questions about those three items that I have included.
And we get homework too.
Yes, you get homework with me, you're also going to get homework.
Just the top one, roll.
That's it.
Oh, that covers the whole book.
Yeah, it's a whole book. They didn't bind it this week because our accountant was on vacation, but they said as soon as we sign it, they'll go back and they'll bind it for us.
I have to sign.
This is all signed.
Thank you.
Seven copies. Just saying my centennial stuff.
Hopefully it is.
It is.
Oh, by the way...
I left it in the hands of someone else.
Mr. Chairman, I think that you, if anybody would like to comment on the fireworks display of the centennial, it was unbelievable.
It was awesome.
It was really unbelievable.
First fireworks display Millville's had ever?
Nope, they had 175th. They actually had the parade, a bonfire, and the fireworks all in one same, the same day. But, you know, 25 years, people tend to forget things, so, yeah, it was the...
A few not around at that time.
It was great. I had friends in Northbridge who said they heard the bangs and when that thing started, I felt a sense of relief for the whole committee. So it was a great thing.
I saw the finale, the display, the finale.
Yeah.
Great.
They were a great company to work with and it was a very proud moment for the whole town, really was, so.
I thought it was outstanding. Well, thank you. Thank you for it. The committee's hard work.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.